City Council Facebook page as well as the Lawrence City Council YouTube page. Uh, Rock Hall, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Levy.
Present.
Counselor LaPlante. Counselor Luzon.
Present.
Counselor Del Rosario.
Present.
Counselor Marmal.
Present.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counselor Vice President Infante.
Present.
Counselor President Rodriguez.
Present. All right. Um. Please, uh, join me for a moment of silence. Now, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My vote, public participation vote. So today, we're gonna have the privilege to have in public participation, uh, twice to, if possible. So we are going to pursue with public participation, the rules of public participation are as follows. You're gonna have two and a half minutes to speak. Uh, and at the two-minute, uh, mark, you're gonna hear a beep, a sound, or an indication. They still have thirty seconds to speak. Please refer to this council as a whole. Uh. If your name is not, uh, listed here, we provide you with the opportunity to, for you to list your name. The first name that we have is H. Mali. Name and address for the record, please.
Job to protect our citizens. Lawrence Police, this union of pride and honor. Thank you for making Lawrence a safe city. Million thanks to all DPW workers and leadership. Thank you for making Lawrence a beautiful city. Lawrence Inspection Department, thank you for excellent job. We support your union. We must hire more inspector. Lawrence Public School with impeccable leadership by Honorable Superintendent Ralph Guerrero. Moving forward. Lawrence Teachers, thank you for excellent job. We support your union. Lawrence Teachers, because of you, Lawrence will rise again. Lawrence always is strong. Lawrence always unite. We are proud to support our veteran. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your bravery. We must hire two position in the Veterans Department. We must hire the best commission for elderly. We must pay our long-term city employees the same wages like the new hire. We pray for the safety of all the police officers and the first responder. Lawrence Fire Department with impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Delaney doing excellent job. We, the Laurentian, proud of the new police department building, the best in the nation. Lawrence Police, a shining superstar in the sky of Lawrence.
Right, the next person that we have is, uh, Rich Russell, Councilor Russell. Name and address for the record, please.
Evening, Councilors. Richard Russell, thirty-four Cross Street. You notice I did not use the word "good" with the word "evening." This political campaign has taken all the good out of Lawrence. Is the election worker's paid suspension gonna turn into another Junior Tahita type of punishment? A paid suspension for a month and then termination? Let me guess what she did wrong. She followed the rules as required by the various MGLs that the elections are held under and not the rules wanted by the Campaign Central on the third floor. Am I close? I think so. Uh, regarding Agenda Item three ninety-three, the appointment of Jacqueline Mamal, unenrolled voter, to the Board of Registrazers. My comments are not intended as a slam towards Jackie. In the past, we have campaigned for several candidates, and as things happen in life, our interests went in different directions and our friendship d歪. I, at one time, about ten years ago, attempted to become a member of the Board of Registrazers, only to be rebuffed because I was an unenrolled voter. Then the city clerk told me unenrolled voters were not allowed to be on the Board of Registrazers. I even ended up testifying before a joint State House Committee about the unfairness of, of disallowing unenrolled voters to this position. To the best of my knowledge, nothing has ever changed. So why the sudden change to place an unenrolled voter on the Board of Registrazers? Why, at this point, so close to an election? And how long has this position been vacant? It appears that there might be election issues in the background. I apologize for being a conspiracy theory fanatic. I thank you for the time to express my concerns.
The next person that we have is Rosa Valerio. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rosa Valerio. I live at eleven Lawrence Street. Salutations, councilors. I want to address the item number fifty-five, five-five-one-two-four, Proposed Anti-Camping, um, Ordinance. I have a series of questions. I know they're not gonna be answered, but I'm gonna put them out there. But plans are there, are being considered for the unhoused. How long can the police station hold someone who was arrested from these encampments? So then what? Where are these unhoused people to go? What services are being provided? So the unhoused are now out in the streets, out without any services, just locked up in the police station for a while, and then back again in the streets, like a revolving door. Thank you for your time.
The next person is, um... Ana Javier.
Good evening, councilors, um, city officials, and members of the, of our community. My name is Ana Javier. I live at two-fifty Merrimack Street in Lawrence. I want to also address item number five-five-one, um, twenty-four, which is an item that, um, it's the Proposed Anti-Camping Ordinance, and this seeks to prohibit unauthorized camping in public spaces here in Lawrence. The item has been on the agenda for the last year, as you all know, and a public hearing was scheduled last month. Um, unfortunately, it was scheduled, it was rescheduled for today, and today I came to find, find out, it was rescheduled again for November sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Now, by that time, temperatures will be dropping, the cold months will be here, and we, and we will, and we will not have real, a real compassionate plan in place to address the reality of homelessness in the city. This continues, if this continued rescheduling, which will seem like a, it seems like a small administrative delay, but for those that are outside, every day matters. Cold weather is not just uncomfortable, it is also dangerous. And for some, it can be life-threatening. We are considering a law that could criminalize camping in public spaces, but we have yet to identify where people are supposed to be going afterwards. We have individuals in Lawrence that struggle with substance abuse disorder, mental health challenges, or simple economic challenges or hardships. Many can't afford even a room house, and rent continues to rise while wages lag behind. Anyone can end up homeless. Passing an ordinance without a comprehensive housing for services or service plan does not solve homelessness. I simply, it simply moves it out of the sight. It just puts it aside, often into a criminal legal system. We would be asking that resources will be available when this, these, this ordinance takes effect. These are some questions that I would have. Where will people go when encampments are cleared? And how will be, they be protected with dignity and safety for our most vulnerable residents as winter approaches? I urge City Council to approach this issue with both urgency and compassion instead of focusing solely on banning encampments. Thank you all for listening to me, and good night.
Yeah. If anybody from the public, uh, at this table that would like to, uh, some, uh, to have their equipment for translation support, they're available, uh, the personnel is available on the public. So if anybody would like translation services, please let us know. Uh, the next person that we have is Julio Mera. No, Mera, yeah. Julio Mera.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Julio Mera from the Merrimack Valley Dream Center. We're part of the Dream Center Network, which is, uh, sixty dream centers throughout the United States and fifteen in different countries. Uh, we are here located in Lawrence, and we work with individuals that are unhoused. Um, I know that, as Ana Javier was mentioning here, that, uh, this has been a discussion, uh, for probably about a year. I'm just following up on, unfortunately, following up on it now. It was scheduled to be for today, and then it's scheduled for, I guess, next, next month, you know? Obviously, um, some of the things that I want to say is, uh, you know, traveling through other states, um, that's declining states like Seattle, San Francisco, other things where they try to implement the anti-camping, uh, doesn't work, you know? And all I ask is, on behalf of the community and those that we serve, is that we find a good and effective solution, because we know that anti-camping pretty much is criminalizing homelessness, you know? Um, and, you know, it's wasting taxpayers' money. I don't know what the purpose is by anti-camping. If, if you, if they're picking them up, are they arresting them, then letting them go, what the case may be, or they're just gonna continue ripping up the tents and having them, um, dispersed to other areas? You know, important thing is, um, you know, back in the nineties, things were very, uh, you know, there was something that was, uh, tried to put at the same time when I was homeless in Lawrence in those nineties, and they tried some of the anti-camping thing, that didn't work. You know, what happens is people spread out different areas, and it makes it harder for social agencies to go find the, um, you know, to go help them, to find them, you know, support services that they need. Um, and study shows that it's cheaper to invest more support services than obviously, uh, enforcing this with, you know, court time, jail cost, fines, things like that, things like that, you know? So we're asking, um, it also damages community trust when these individuals wanna get the help. At the end of the day, remember, these are single, these are human beings, and they all deserve, regardless of whatever the situation they're put, they're put in there, they're somebody's mother, somebody's son, somebody's uncle, somebody's brother, sister, they're human beings, you know? Back in, since time's been recorded, two thousand years ago, in Israel, you know, there's been poor people and homeless people for a long time and for civilization. And at that time, Israel used to, when they used to have their farming, things like that, I don't know if you believe in God or whatever the case may be, is, you know, God ordered the people that, parts of the farms around were for the individuals that needed assistance that were homeless, unhoused, and they have food and things like that, because it was all about compassion and finding ways and proper solution to be able to help them. Thank you.
You so much. Uh, the next person that we have is Natasha Alba. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, council members. Natasha Alba, two-thirty-six Lawrence Street. The Proposed Camping Bill Ordinance, Anti-Camping Ordinance, is not a solution. It is a way of punishing some of the most vulnerable members of our community. Being homeless, which includes children and the elderly, living with, those living with a mental health illness or struggling with a substance or alcohol use disorder, should never be treated as a crime. These are human conditions, not moral failures. We cannot arrest our way out of poverty, addiction, or mental illness. Adding another charge to someone's record does not fix homelessness. It only makes recovery and stability harder to achieve. These individuals are part of our community, whether we acknowledge it or not. We have a moral responsibility to respond with compassion, solution, and now penalties. Instead of criminalizing survival, homelessness, mental illness, let's bring together our local agencies, service providers, and community members to build coordinated responses. Those are approaches that actually reduce homelessness and improve public safety. None of us are immune to hardship. It just takes one unexpected event, a job loss, a car accident, the death of a loved one, or a mental ill, mental illness crisis, for any of us to find ourselves in a similar position. We can support community safety and law and order, but true safety comes from proactive, effective solutions, not incarceration. Let's be a city that leads with empathy and not fear. I ask, how will this law improve and reduce homelessness, a crisis nationwide? Let's create solutions and not more laws. Thank you.
Right, uh, the next person that we have is Councilor LaPlante, Mark LaPlante.
Council President, I'll, I'll wait off to the next meeting to represent my
At this point, now, the, all these names are gonna be submitted for the record, and we still have a few, a few names that are gonna be for next meetings. Councilors, we have, uh, what, we have no public hearing in this special meeting. We have no communication from the mayor's, uh, city official, city attorney, and we have no report from any committees. But we do have, we have no business on, no items on the old business. We, but we do have a new business, uh, which is item four-fourteen-twenty-five, which is a vote to confirm the location of the October, uh, City Council Regular Meeting, which is gonna take place next, if this vote, uh, is on the affirmative. For that, we're gonna need a vote to suspend the rules and to be able to discuss Rule Number Two, to allow us to change the location of the meeting, and, uh, and, and then we, we should take a vote, because, uh, without, without that vote, we won't be able to perform business on our next meeting at this location. So, councilors, um, as per the recommendation of, uh, the city attorney and the city clerk, uh, we'll take this, uh, vote, uh, to suspend the rules and be able to discuss Rule Number Two. Can I get a motion for, for that?
Motion to suspend the rules?
What's your, to suspend the rule, properly second, and this, this is within the sense of changing the, the location of the, of the next meeting, in properly second discussion.
Quick, quick discussion, it's just for the next meeting, right? Yes, that's it, thank you.
Yes, uh, on the next agenda, we have an item on the agenda that's gonna, we're gonna be able to discuss, uh, that same situation for the next meeting. So we're gonna do it, meeting by meeting, as we need it. Uh, any questions? Right, at this time, we need to take a vote to be able to discuss, to suspend the rules and then be able to, to vote, right?
I want to suspend the rules. So, 'cause we're not taking, we're going for what, maybe, and then, second is actually going on in the location.
All right. Um. Okay, uh, we'll, if it is no other questions or discussions, we take a rock call.
Counselor Reyes? Just to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Counselor Marmal?
Yes.
Counselor, um, Del Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Luzon?
Yes.
Counselor LaPlante?
Yes.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Counselor President Rodriguez?
Yes. So now, councilors, we needed, um, Council, Madam Clerk, do you, just for the purpose of clarity, do you mind reading, uh, Rule Number Two?
Rule Number Two, um, begins with, um, the City Council shall meet at seven o'clock in the evening every Tuesday, except as may otherwise be provided by City Council order. And then the second piece of that reads, "The place of such meeting shall be the City Council Chambers, City Hall, unless some other place may be agreed upon by majority vote." So based on that language of the majority vote, um, document four-one-four is put on your agendas.
Okay, I get a motion to suspend Rule Number Two and allow this meeting to take place, then next regular meeting to take place at sixty-five Grafford Street, at the South Lawrence East Complex.
So move. Second.
On the table, properly second discussion. There's no discussion. Counselor Levy.
It's just only a question. Uh, what about the, the meeting of the different committee?
Uh, the, we are going to have a, a discussion on the next agenda related to the same topic, which is, um, it's gonna bring up subcommittees and potential, potentially our next City Council meeting as well. But in the way that, um, I anticipate, or potentially we could do it, is, uh, doing a trussoon to facilitate a issue. Councilors, if it is, if it is not further questions, I'll call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Uh, do we need a rock call?
It just says by majority, so I don't
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. All right, councilors, if it is no other business related to the special meeting, I'll call a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, properly second, discussion, all discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting for the Lawrence City Council. Today is Tuesday, October seventh, twenty-twenty-five, and this meeting is taking place at the South Lawrence East Auditorium, sixty-five Grafford Street. Pursuant to Chapter Twenty of the Act of twenty-twenty-two, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation at the location where we are, sixty-five Grafford Street, as well as the, uh, as remotely. The zone link for this meeting was, um, um, submitted and provided to anybody that requested to the city clerk's office. This meeting is also being transmitted live through the Facebook Lawrence City Council page as well as the, uh, YouTube Lawrence City Council, um, page. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor. Counselor Levy?
Present.
Counselor LaPlante?
Present.
Counselor Luzon? Counselor Del Rosario?
Present.
Counselor Marmal?
Present.
Counselor Reyes?
Present.
Counselor Vice President Infante?
Present.
Counselor President Rodriguez?
Present. Um. Now, we are, we are, can you please join me for a moment of silence? Now, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilors, can I get a, um, can I get a motion to approve minutes from August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, and August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five?
So move. Second.
Some motion on the table, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Uh, we are going to public participation now. If anybody from the public that wishes to speak on public participation, we provide you with the opportunity. Just need to let us know. We have a few names that, um, are here for this meeting, and the first person that we have is Councilor LaPlante, Mark LaPlante.
Good evening, Councilors. Mark LaPlante, twenty-nine Dursow Ave., right here in District F. Um, what I'm here to speak about tonight is this thing called the Lawrence Square Project. Uh, you may have heard about it. You've been invited to the, the two that have happened so far already, and one tomorrow. And what the Lawrence Square Project is very simple. It is telling the story of the individuals who have, have served or have done something with great distinction and who've got a corner or a square named after them in our city. All too often, we would go by a sign, see a name, and not know their story. Or sometimes a sign would be there one day, a snowstorm comes, and the sign is gone for years, and we don't even know what that sign was about. So through the help of the Cultural Council, this is not costing the city taxpayers anything, but the Cultural Council, they have provided a grant so that we're able to go ahead and put some fifty signs up throughout the city, telling the stories of the individuals who had their, have, have something named after them. Um, so far, we've done two. We're doing them once a week. Two weeks ago, we did Robert Charles Beard at the intersection of East Haverhill and Ferry. Last week, we did, uh, David PJ Bedrosian at the corner of Maple and Lawrence Street. Tomorrow, four-thirty PM, we're gonna be doing, um, Paul Bargnorio, which is at the intersection of Jackson and Union Street, right at the entranceway to Campino Common. The week after that, on Thursday, the sixteenth, Father Urbio Carabao is going to be remembered. He is at the Holy Rose Church, the corner there is at Common, nope, excuse me, Essex Street in Union Street. Um, I invite you all to be there. I will continue to continue reminders, we're doing them once a week. They're gonna continue this year into next year. Fifty weeks is almost a year, so it's gonna take a while to get there. But I think it's so important, councilors, Council President, that we go ahead and we remember the stories. We have forgotten so many of them. It's time to remember them, and that's what this project's about. Really quick, here are the thank yous. Lawrence Cultural Council, thank you so much to them for funding this. Mayor Brian A. DePena, without the mayor's approval on this, we probably wouldn't be able to go forward on it. The Lawrence DPW, they were helpful in facilitating and bringing these things and making these things happen. The Lawrence Public Library, uh, they are, we are putting this on a blog, so you, your constituents, my constituents, our neighbors, anybody can go ahead and see this, see the information about the individuals. And finally, Yedira Batantes Moldun. If you see one of these signs, there're gonna be certain elements that are gonna be consistent. A picture of the individual, the city seal, if they're in the military, the branch of service, their name, a small little indicator, a quote, or some background information. And here's the thing, there's a QR code, English, and a QR code, Spanish, on the signs. So all we have to do, whether you're a native Spanish speaker or English speaker, is press the QR code to get that full story of that individual. I do the one in English, and Yedira does the one in Spanish. I'm so thankful for them and all the partners. I, again, I invite all of you to join me at these. And by the way, when I'm, I'm getting kind of flustered when I go to these, there's a lot of folks and things happening, please tug my sleeve, tell me you're here, 'cause I want to acknowledge you when you're here. I wanna make sure the people know that you're there, as you care about, you have the time. It's no commitment, but if you make the time, I wanna make sure people know that you're there. And I, I thank you all for your support as we go through this project, both this year and next year. Thank you.
Next, on our public participation list, we have Council President Giovanni Rodriguez. Uh, Council President, name and address for the record, please.
Giovanni Rodriguez, uh, City Council President. Uh, I reside in thirty-two Gallo Street, Lawrence, Mass. Um. Essentially, standing up today in front of you because, uh, I am very concerned as a citizen, and I'm concerned about the elections coming up. The process of the election and integrity of the, of the election is for the benefit of all, not for the benefit only of the candidates or for the benefit of a few. If we have a fair election, elections, Lawrence, the city of Lawrence is gonna be, it's gonna be better in every aspect of the process, in every aspect of the city. Having a fair election, uh, will mean that the city will grow, the city will advance, and the city will manage issues that potentially weren't able to manage in the past. Having a, uh, what happened this week is something that I'm very concerned, a suspension of an employee from that department, uh, without the proper due process. And when I said without the proper due process, it's because if a strategic way of doing this was put in place, so, uh, this person didn't have the opportunity to potentially defend herself until something else, uh, happened. It is concerning that we are going through this situation, the city of Lawrence. It is concerning that we, as a Laurentians, are putting one of these, one of the most important departments, twenty-nine days, twenty-eight days from the election day, on jeopardized. one of the most important departments, 29 days, 28 days from the election day, on jeopardized. We are putting a department that is so important for the upcoming election for failure. And essentially, where the administration is recommending already people to come and help, they are recommending people to come and help, specific names that they want people to come. Why? Potentially create doubt about the result of the election. And if they create doubt about the result of the elections, that in core will sustain. And that's very dangerous. Because what they proposing is to bring people up that have run the election in the past for the city of Lawrence, that have their own mindset about how to run an election. And essentially, what they potentially could do is with not disrespect of the professionalism that they're going to bring, is that potentially they're going to create doubt about what should be done on any specific situation that is presented in front of the people that are running the election. That is concerning, because what is happening in Lawrence is that we need to, we must, we shall work together on every aspect, because we, as a citizen, deserve better. We, I'm very concerned as a citizen. I'm very concerned on every aspect of me participating on society here in Lawrence about this upcoming election. If we don't do something later on, we're going to regret it. So with that, I finish up my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President. That was the last name on our list. Do we have any other individuals that may want to participate? Seeing none, public participation is now closed.
All these names are going to be submitted for the record. Alright, I just want to correct the address that I mentioned for this meeting, that I believe I said 165, but I probably said 65. So the address of this location is 165 Crawford Street, the South Lawrence East Complex. Alright, we are going to public hearing. There is no public hearing, and this matters at this time. Communication from the mayor, city attorney, and any city officials, we have item 7825, which is the approval by mail locations. I'm sorry, I apologize because I forgot my glasses today. Approval by mail, local elections, September 16 and November 25. We are, we are going to provide an update on that item, and the city club will take over from here.
Thank you, Council President. With regard to this document, after you had voted on it, it was sent to the mayor, and he did veto the item. We then later clarified with the state that it was not vetoable. It should not have been sent to him. And unlike most matters that come before the council, this was unique as it was the enactment or opting out of a state policy that only the council had the right to opt out of. So the head of the Elections Division for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Undersecretary Galvin, is an attorney named Michelle Tasaneri. She did send us some correspondence on that, and I'll read it in its entirety into the record then. It just says, and I apologize, I don't, it's really doc up here. Thank you for your email and your legal analysis. This was in response to someone telling her that they thought they did have the veto power. She says, "Thank you for your email and your legal analysis. However, we believe your conclusion is wrong. It remains our position that the vote taken by the city council to opt out of early voting by mail is not subject to either approval or veto of the mayor. It appears that your rationale relies upon the conclusion that the vote taken in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 25B, Sub A1, constitutes a vote or on a measure subject to the mayor's veto power under the provisions of the city charter. We disagree. It is a position of this office that the action of a municipality to opt out of the provisions of Section 25B, Sub A1 of Chapter 54 is not a measure adopted by a municipality, municipality's legislative body as supported by case law, see Andrade v. City Council of Gloucester. Rather, the vote taken was an executive action of the council to opt out of a voting requirement using a specific process enacted by the state legislature, and as such, is not a measure passed by the city council subject to a veto. Similarly, the vote taken by the city council is not a measure subject to the citizens' initiative process outlined in Section 9.2 of the city charter. The provisions of Section 25B, Sub A1 of the Chapter 54 give the city council exclusive authority to vote to opt out, and therefore, the citizen initiative process could not be used to force a ballot question vote. Additionally, if the legislative intent was to provide for approval by the mayor for such vote, the legislature would have included that provision as it did in other statutes. For example, Section 18A of Chapter 53 of the general laws allows for the placement of non-binding questions on a municipal election ballot by the vote of the city council of such city with the approval of the mayor where so required by the city charter. Section 18B of Chapter 53 provides for a vote of the council acting with the approval of the mayor, subject to the charter of the city, for local acceptance of the law relative to providing information relating to local ballot questions. Also, in General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21C, the local authority that can vote to place a question on the ballot is defined as, in a city, the council with the mayor's approval when required by law. Those key words are missing from the provisions of Chapter of General Law, Chapter 54, Section 25B, Sub A1, which further demonstrates that the mayor has no approval role or veto power over the vote taken by the city council. As mentioned in my original conversation and email to the Chief of Staff Castro, we received multiple complaints regarding candidates and campaigns conducting that negatively impacted voters and may have violated state law, which are continuing to review, which we are continuing to review. At no point did I indicate that we have reached a conclusion on any complaints. We have consistently remained impartial over the many years in which we've been working with the city of Lawrence relative to elections. We are committed to ensuring that all legally qualified voters have a fair and unimpeded right to exercise their franchise in a manner consistent with state and federal law. Our focus has been and continues to be on ensuring that the voters of Lawrence have the ability to vote with confidence and free from interference. As such, we expect to meet with the city clerk and Elections Department to review plans for early voting in person and for election day to make sure that candidates and campaigns are aware of the rules and regulations governing conduct. I've included the city attorney on this response in the event that he has a different legal interpretation to share. And then sign Michelle, Michelle K. Tasaneri.
Thank you. Thank you for reading this for the record. Councillor President Infante?
Thank you. I originally wasn't going to make any statement regarding this item, but as I was listening to Madam Clerk read the last email from the state, I think it's important for me to say something. I first want to say, I think it's disgusting that over mail-in ballots, us councillors have been targeting each other, I'm going to keep it general, over mail-in ballots. I think it's disgusting that councillors have been yelling and intimidating employees behind closed doors over elections. I think it's disgusting that us as a body have been going on public media, misinforming the public about this vote. For the last few weeks, I've been putting out fires from, for constituents that have been calling me, union members that have been calling me regarding this vote. I think it's disgusting that it's okay for a group of individuals to attack another group of individuals on the council. But when we're trying to do the right thing as a whole, for some reason, there's certain councillors who always get deemed as evil or the wrong or horrible for trying to do what's best for the overall community. This isn't about us. We're not going to be leaders forever here in the city of Lawrence. Well, we may, some of us may. Some of us may be interested in other positions or et cetera. I can tell you for one, I have an amazing career in marketing that this is, I do this because I love serving my community. Elections integrity, political integrity goes way beyond nine individuals that serve as city councillors. And I think that, now that I think, I know, we should be better examples. Because what's going on is truly disgusting. We're supposed to be leaders of our community. But we pick and choose when to be leaders. I also believe that when the letter was sent to the Secretary of State's office in July, I don't believe the council as a whole thought that there was actually an opportunity to fix our wrongs, our wrongdoing. And that's why I believe that that letter was sent and why certain councillors from the other team were being attacked. But now that we try to fix the problem, it's for whatever reason, those same councillors are still the bad people. Again, I know we're all leaders in our own right. We all have different leadership styles. And I see that our community see that in us and believe in us. If they didn't, we wouldn't be sitting here today, and we wouldn't be where we are during our campaigning and election process. But overall, we need to do better, because we look like children.
Right. Despite, at this time, communications from the mayor's, city officials, city attorney will be closed unless somebody else wants to speak up on this matter. Alright, we'll proceed with the agenda. We have Boyan Finan Subcommittee have three reports that are going to be presented to us. And the first one is item 36125, authorization to spend $122,937.71 from the Office of Planning and Development Grants from Massachusetts Department of Public Health, Madam Vice President and the Chair of the Boyan Finance Committee, Infante.
Thank you. Through you, Council President. Item 361-25, authorization to expend $122,938.71 from the Office of Planning and Development Grant Funds for the Office of Planning and Development Grant Funds from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for winter protocols and temporary replacements of fire victims was sent up to the full council as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
There's a motion on the table. Can you hear a second?
Second.
Properly, yes, properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Councillor Plant?
During the meeting, and I didn't have a chance to watch it, during the meeting, did they say where folks would be placed?
They did. Through you, Council President. They did. I believe this facility, if anyone remembers 100%, I don't remember the list 100%, but I do believe this facility that we're in currently is one of them. Right here, the South Lawrence East. I would recommend, I should have probably had that on me, but I would recommend to, for you to reach out to the office, because I don't want to misspeak, as I don't have the list in front of me at the moment.
So essentially, yeah. The question is, where are they going to be meeting, or where are they going to be having those?
Places.
Places. Well, they're going to be working with different organizations as they did in the past, and they're going to pursue the plans that they have from previous years. Lassada South is one of the organizations that they're going to be working with. And potentially, they're going to also open up opportunities there for the people that are in need. And all the places that they have done in the past, I believe this is one of the base that they use in the past, and I know for sure that they're going to open up one in the south, one in the north, and one location in the south, one location in the north, and working with different organizations.
And then just, Council President, through you, and I don't mean to put anybody on the spot on this, but if you know the information, that's helpful, because I don't think the person is here who is sponsoring this. I would ask that individual if they were here. Is there a difference between winter protocol and the fires? So if it's a winter protocol, I'm presuming it's just a very temporary, it's during the day or something. Or is it overnight? Are you putting students in this complex overnight during the school year? I just don't know. I mean, this is my district, so I'm curious as to how that plays out.
Yep, so it's temporary replacement. This will, this, these facilities, the public facilities would be used more until they find like hotel rooms or a semi-more
Temporary.
Temporary, or it's temporary but semi-more, more stable location. This is just, these areas will be used while, until they get their planning together and everything.
Yes.
During emergencies, because sometimes you need, at the moment, you need a place to just place them, and so they're able to figure out where to house them for the time being.
Final question, is a very specific number, $122,938.71, not 72 cents, not 70 cents, it's 71 cents. So clearly, there's some sort of, there's a reason why that's there. My question is, I have no idea if that's a lot, a little. Are we, what happens if we get to 122 and 938, and we have somebody here? Are we going to go into free cash? I mean, what happens in the event that, again, I have no idea of context? Maybe there's a lot of money here. Maybe there's a tremendous buffer, and maybe we and I get there. Or maybe it's tight, and what happens if it is tight? What happens at that point when?
Yeah, I can respond to that. Essentially, the first thing that, just to add to the previous question, an emergency need to be declared for them to be able to use these funds. An emergency, perhaps a fire, is also being considered for this fund to be a strength. And if it is a weather-related emergency, that's also a way to spend this money. Yes, she mentioned that it was a little bit of money, not much. But this is one of the funds that they use to leverage that operation. That doesn't mean this is the only funds they use. It could be other funds that are in place already, and this is going to be an add-on to any other funds that they currently have.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions, councillors? I love this mic, because it tells me who have the mics on. Alright, councillors on?
Just a good question. In the past, and I understand this is a grant, a one-time grant. In the past, the city worked closely with Hill Lawrence, but there's another organization in Lowell that I don't.
DTI?
Say that again?
DTI?
No, I think it's that one. But my, in general, the city worked closely with that organization in Lowell. Also, along with Great Lawrence Community Action Council. They were the ones dealing with fire victims in Lawrence. They will fundraise, and they actually did an amazing job providing resources to the fire victims that we had in the past. So my question, is the city is opening a door to be the one resolving, facilitating, financial assistance, and other resources to fire victims in the future? Is that where we heading? Or, this is, it looks like, this is an emergency grant, a one-time grant, but we cannot put aside that we go through a lot of fires in the city, unfortunately. So are we ready to move to the second step? Is the city moving to a second step of being a provider for future fire victims? I think maybe what I'm trying to put up there is a question or a concern instead of us working with agencies that we had worked in the past, and they did an amazing job, we creating opening a door. Just to put it out there, Council President.
I respond, I can respond to that, because that was one of my questions to that current person that is in charge of this department, perhaps. And what I see out of her answer is that, yes, we are going back to what this position was before, which was basically facilitating. which was basically uh facilitating different resources and different organizations uh to allocate proper resource when it comes to uh fire victims or when it comes to uh uh homeless and or people in need and that and that are under that circumstances. Uh, essentially, that's what I get from her, uh, because she's very professional about what she's doing. And what I see is that she will help out to leverage that uh department as a potential liaison between the community and that uh and the organizations and people in need. That's what, that's what I I get out of her answer on that. So hope, we have hope.
Oh, I understand, Council President. Thank you. And just for the record, I was not present at this meeting, unfortunately. Uh, but I think we have so many nonprofits in the area that the city uh had worked with them in the past and they continue working. So it 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 looks like that this approach is opening a door for the city to become another, to take the place of any of other nonprofits that are already doing their job and that are receiving assistance from the city, just to put it out there.
Councilor.
Concern. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Counsel, Counsel Rosario.
Thank you through you. And when I watched the meeting, what I understand is the city will receive the money and they continue to work with those nonprofits. Um, the nonprofits will be the part of it. The only thing is the grant is coming to the city. So she will distribute the money to the nonprofit for them to continue the work that they've been doing with the city. That's what I got when I saw the meeting. So it it's not that the city is going to work directly with this money itself. They're going to provide this amount, this this funds to the nonprofit. They're already working, but they've been working with the city. They have the experience with the displacements and the fires, victims, and also the winter protocols. So they're just going to uh receive the grant and distribute the money through through the nonprofit that been partnership with the city. Thank you.
Any other councilors? All right, at this time, there is no other questions. I'll call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Now we're going to item three sixty four twenty five, authorization to spend a million two hundred Hi, Counselor President Infante, item three sixty four twenty five.
Three sixty four, through you, Council President. Item three sixty four dash twenty five, authorization to expend one million two two hundred eight thousand nine hundred forty two dollars with seventy three cents um for the of the twenty twenty six Massachusetts Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant was sent up to the full council as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the table, properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Counselor Plan.
Let me just comment again on the very challenging times we're facing as a country with respect to our budgets and how much we are reliant on um state, the federal aid. Uh, the Commonwealth received about sixteen billion dollars in federal aid. A good chunk of that goes to public safety, in which we are the beneficiaries through, I believe, the 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 State Public Safety Agency. And uh, well, I'm going to support this tonight, the one point two million dollars. And that sounds like it's a done deal and we're going to get that money. Um, I I will tell you that I'm still concerned uh with with the with government shutdown right now with the budget reconciliation, the act that took place earlier this year. I'm still concerned that those monies will actually be released. So um I just hope that the administration slash the police department, um, when they get this, they spend it and spend it soon. Um, just because I just don't have a lot of comp and spend it wisely. Don't just spend it for spending sake. That's got to be clear. But um but we we, that's a concern, and it's going to be a concern on all these things, and it should be a concern of all of us um as we go through this. So I I there's nothing we can do here at our level to impact what's going to go on in Washington DC. We're like every other municipality across the country uh that's going to be facing challenges and maybe even more so in a state like Massachusetts uh because of our political dynamics and the Commonwealth. Uh, we may feel a little bit more and with this administration and this commerce. So I just think we've got to be mindful of that as we go forward, as we accept that. And I would encourage Ms. Rosa to take that, I'm sorry, Ms. Shepherd, to take that my my apologies, Director Shepherd, uh, take, take that message back. Um, and and just know that at least one counselor and maybe others uh are are somewhat concerned about the political environment they're in and minds. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Let's open the opportunity to Ms. uh Director Shepherd, just here with us.
Through you, City Councils. My name is Rosa Shepherd, Director of Support Services of the Lawrence Police Department. Um, as I was here on my last meeting, I'm here to present our grant, the municipal grant for FY twenty six. Um, we've been having this grant for the past twelve years and it has been definitely very beneficial for the police department. The amount that we were granted was a million two oh eight nine hundred and forty two dollars with seventy three cents. Um, on the last meeting, it was requested for me to provide a breakdown of how much it will cost to send a new recruit to the to any academy, whether it's Lynn, Lowell, or the uh uh Northern, Northern Angeles Community College. Um, as of right now, it will cost around forty six thousand dollars just to send a new recruit. That is not counting uh once they graduated from the from the academy. And that is including um the physical, psychological uniform, the uniform and all the equipment. Um, even the ammunition that they need to, they need to use to be trained, plus the firearms as well uh that needs to be purchased for the new recruits. And that I'm and on this, uh, I'm also including the tasers, which is actually part of the police department. So the um, this um, the municipal staffing grant, they can, uh, they are allowing us to um to purchase tasers once the new recruit graduate and become a new officer.
Uh, quick question on that. Do you include on the the time that they've been the payment of their salary by the time that they've been on at the academy?
Yes, they will be paid a thousand seven nine sixty per week for twenty six weeks in the amount of twenty eight thousand sixty nine point sixty for the whole twenty six weeks while they are in the academy.
On the total amount is, you you can you just quick mention it again?
Twenty eight, twenty eight thousand sixteen dollars point sixty cents.
And uh, and the total amount?
For the total amount, forty six thousand twenty seven dollars and seventy cents.
Right, councilors, any questions when we got to this grant? I just want to say thank, I just want to thanks to that uh, to the state delegation that have helped tremendously. Uh, I know uh Leader Moran have worked tremendously on this grant. Uh, Senator Pagano currently also uh the former Senator for Lawrence. Uh, Barry Faingo and the state reps that are also representing Lawrence as uh representative Estela Reyes and Representative Francisco Paulino. They've been helping out tremendously with this grant, so I just want to say thank you to them. Any questions, councilors? At this point, I entertain a a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Now we're going to item three sixty five twenty five, Madam Vice President and the Chair of the Boyanon Finance Committee.
Item three sixty five dash twenty five, authorization to pay prior year bills in the total of thirty two thousand eight hundred and sixty five dollars with fifty three cents was sent up as a fa, from the police department, uh, was sent up as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
A motion on the table. Can you hear a second?
Second.
Properly second discussion. All right, I hear no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Now we're going to personal committee. Item uh three eighty eight twenty five, Madam uh Madam Chair of the of the Personal Committee.
Item three eighty eight dash twenty five, contract renewal for city clerk, uh, for our city clerk was sent up as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
All right, there is a motion on the table, properly second discussion. Have the city attorney here. Any questions? Any questions to the city attorney? All right, I hear no questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it.
If I might, Council President, I just wanted to add one thing. I know that the um the reason I'm here is because it's it's hard to blow your own horn when it's your contract, but I want to let you know with all the things that's going on in the election department, I am in constant contact with the state. The state has been nothing but complimentary about the city clerk and her office. They are, they're just, the the work that they work together and I talk to them every day is just fantastic. So I wanted you to know that that other people appreciate what the city clerk does in this city.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your input. Uh, now we're going to, and thank you for staying so late. Uh, now we're going to ordinance committee. Uh, the Chair of the ordinance committee, Counselor Plan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Before I start, you'll see a bunch of withdrawals, and and the reason why, just, I'm not going to explain this every time is a withdrawal. The reason why it's being withdrawn is for probably never reasons, but probably the the most basic reason is that this has been on our agenda now for two years or more. Um, and so if councilors really wish they want to move on something, it's been around for a while, it hasn't moved. Uh, they certainly can move on it if they if they wish. I would, I would encourage. So so that's, that's the reason why most of them are withdrawn. Other ones will be self-explanatory. First one, document forty seven twenty three. Uh, ordinance committee sent the proposed change of ordinance, chapter two point one six zero nine, you didn't classify its plan as schedule. Uh, so schedule A, chart, that's a different, chart A, sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. And make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Taken.
There is a motion on the table, properly second discussion. Any or none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item forty nine twenty three.
Change Broadway is Juan Pablo Duarte Boulevard, sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Second.
There's a motion to withdraw, item forty nine twenty three, properly second discussion, councilors. Uh, do we get in touch with that uh, with Masvida? Uh, to withdraw this item. I know that they've been interested on not changing the name Broadway, but actually the adding or extending the Juan Pablo Duarte Boulevard
Through Council President.
All the way to the Metto One Line, Counselor Rosario.
And 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 I think this has been done. We we expanded from Common all the way to the Metto One Line, so this has been done.
So it's
We did, we did approve it. I don't remember when, but it's has been approved. I don't know why it's still on the agenda.
Two and one seven.
Yep, I mean, it was, it was, it was, it was the the park.
The sign up.
Yeah, it was the park.
I know it's a sign up, but I mean, I just want to make sure like it's something else.
But uh, no, but it was the park. We did the park, and I think if I'm not mistaken, two years back, we did expand it from Common Street all the way to the Metto One Line. So it has been done.
Yes, I just want to make sure like we uh before we withdraw it, if it is anything that would need to be done uh that was been taken care of before we withdraw. So the research, the research has been done that this is all separated ago? Yes, no? Good?
So, through you, as a president, as far as I know, we extended the the Broadway, um yes, from S Street, that was from S Street to Park Street, you know? Yes, and there is something right now, um, I'm not part of the uh, this committee, but I know that is something right now that has been talking regarding the park that is, is going to get the name or so uh as a part of the Boulevard. I I think so that they're going to come in front of the city council to talk about it.
All right, we will draw it, um, then if everything has been done. Um, others, any other questions around forty nine twenty three? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item sixty three twenty three.
It's a clarification grounds or basis, if any, for the issue is a charter objection. It's sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Second.
Motion to withdraw, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item one thirty three twenty three.
Loaning zone, um, two thirty two Brew Street, Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM. It's sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Second.
There's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item one forty six twenty three.
I propose ordinance regarding stipends. This was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Second.
Motion to withdraw, properly second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item one forty seven twenty three.
It's proposed ordinance regarding required public notices to impact your residence prior to implementation. Sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Taken.
Motion to withdraw, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item one forty eight twenty three.
This is disclosure of a conflict by a municipal employee who sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's Juan Alecantara. Uh, make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item one sixty six twenty three.
This is one way on, I always get this name, Bone, is that right?
Boyne.
Say it again?
Yeah. Boyd.
Bone?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Bone Street, uh, was withdrawn. If I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Taken.
Motion to withdraw, properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two seven twenty three.
A four-way stop sign in Mount Vernon Street, Sparkle Drive and Mount Vernon Circle, sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Uh, there is a motion on the table, properly second to withdraw, discussion. Counselor Vice President Infante.
Thank you. Through you, Council President. I believe, well, we have a two-year, I think a two-year rule for items. Um I mean, I I I will be voting in favor in this, but this will be brought up again uh eventually. We're still having issues and not just this street. I'm looking into other long uh roads within the district as well, but we're still having issues with the speeding. We keep, I keep hearing as a district council, there's a plan, there's a plan, there's, I'm I'm not seeing anything. So we need to figure out an alternative, and I believe increasing four-way stops for longer streets like Mount Vernon, for example, may help with speeding. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but there's still some work being done that on that, so you may see this again in the future.
There is a motion on the table, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two twenty three twenty three.
This is no parking in one oh four Bennetton Street from eight AM to five PM was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Motion to withdraw, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two twenty five twenty three.
West Street, one way, sent up to the full council with favorable recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Second.
The motion, can you hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, uh, I'll bring this back eventually, uh, because I truly believe this is going to be the solution of this whole area around there. But for now, we can withdraw. Discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two two eight twenty three.
Animal control ordinance regulating animal breeding was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
The motion to withdraw.
Second.
Properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two forty eight twenty three.
Uh, this is an ordinance regarding commercial vehicles and commercial overnight parking was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Second.
There's a motion to withdraw, properly second discussion, Counselor Vice President Infante.
And I, um
Cool you about that one, right?
It's us the chair. Why is this being, this is an ongoing issue throughout the city. Why is this item being withdrawn?
Uh, working it out.
So I think a couple of things are are in play. One, this has been on there since twenty twenty three. So we are, we were looking blind at this. We weren't looking at, okay, what's been on the agenda that hasn't been moving, hasn't anything, there's been no action. It's been stagnant. So that's number one. Number two, I, it is an issue, right? I I I agree. I do know that we have another counselor as well who's been working on it. My my, my personal hope is that the counselors who have, the two major principals on this who have an interest in this can work together. I think they have a similar goal on this. I'm talking about the counselor from District C and my at-large counselor to my left. Uh, those, both of those counselors have an interest in this, and so my hope is, it doesn't, whatever angle we take, that it gets to a final resolution. So we can draw, we can not draw, but the thing is, we had similar documents we needed to act on, we shouldn't have two.
Uh, what is the other, the other documents that we have related to to this item or to this topic?
Can you repeat your question, please?
Okay, what is the other documents that we currently um have that is similar to this?
So there's another one, and the the author is here, the sponsor, but very generally, the deal specifically with the school buses and 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 the weight of the vehicles, and school buses are the, and he can speak more or better on this. That's the principle. It may go beyond that. He could be the judge, but that's how I understand.
This is different.
And through you, through you, Council President. And there's also, there's also another item similar, which the police is actually uh deciding what kind of size uh of the vehicles is, was brought up to us by Abel Cano. So they they actually uh taking a look. They, it's been a while, so we need to sometime go back onto our table items and and revise it. Uh, it's mine that it's that it's working on the school buses, which is, it's those are Uh, it's mine that it's, that it's working on the school buses, which is, it's those are commercial vehicles. And also there's one for trucks, but they deciding what weight and what size actually are those commercials, uh, to prevent them to park on the street. So they, we have two similar items on table right now besides this one.
So essentially councillors, what I understand we have from the city of Lawrence is that we have an, an estate law really regarding to, regarding to, um, buses that transport, uh, students, school buses, that allows, um, uh, drivers to be, it's more, um, easier when it comes to parking within our neighborhoods. And most of those vehicles are not, sometimes they are under twenty-four thousand, uh, GP, uh, GBW, which is the weight. Uh, but this one specifically, two forty-eight twenty-three is related to commercial vehicles, which is basically one of the biggest issues that, uh, we currently have on places that we have no parking throughout the city. And essentially, uh, is because, uh, when we actually give out, uh, business certificates, one of the main concerns that the city have is that if you live in a residential area, you're not allowed to park vehicles, commercial vehicles with, uh, on there within a specific weight. It could be commercial vehicles that are under a limited, limited amount of weight. Yeah, uh-huh, but there is others that are prohibited and we have an ordinance on that. What I think we need to do is potentially bring up that, uh, that, um, bring up the people that enforce those ordinance here to discuss the current ordinance we have in place and be able to, uh, request a change based on the current need that we have in the city of Lawrence. Withdrawn it might not, might not helping. Because we're going to have to bring this up again. Maybe what we should do is send correspondents to the inspection or services that are the enforcers of this ordinance and, uh, and potentially read the ordinance that we have in place and be able to update it. Council Levick.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Also, I think that the police department that is the one that is being working right now on the side of the vehicle that can be parked or not in some, in some area. So there were a lot of issues, um, like, I guess that was in, say, on S Street, a lot of, uh, truck while parking right over there and, uh, there was, uh, we have to call, we have to call or the people has to call the police. So, um, um, Mr. Cano is one of the one who's been working on this proposal and working with, uh, we go there also, a member of the police department. I think so that we should again put it back and table this, uh, item and bring them to over here and see what they are doing and how we can miss the order and, of, and the changes and the proposal that they are having right now.
I believe that, yes, uh, the best course, uh, the first, the best course of action at this moment should be sending correspondents to the different departments so they can bring up and bring the law that we currently have uh, in Lawrence. And I, I have no issues by, uh, just keeping it here at this level or sending it back to committee if it is, uh, if it's needed, but we need to have some type of, uh, plan as of we're moving forward on this specific issue. And on the school bus, um, there is a different set of laws that are in place. And then take that opportunity to also move forward on that because when we talk about parking throughout the city, this is something that is been, uh, an, an ongoing issue all the time, especially on districts that are very congested. Uh, and, uh, and, and, and it's an open, an, an eyes-opening situation that we find out once we're walking on the streets, uh, and, and we see the issues. So this is a great opportunity to op, open up the, uh, open up this topic, uh, instead of withdrawing.
Council.
Councilor Respressing Infante.
If I may, if I may, um, enforcement to, to Council Levy's point, enforcement is a huge one. I, I can tell you, we have an issue on one particular street within the district that I believe they even do mechanic work on big, on big, um, commercial trucks from their driveway. And I've, I've received so many complaints about it and it's still happening. We can continue and we've mentioned this as a body numerous of times. We can continue putting these ordinance or putting these ordinance or trying to, to improve existing ordinance, but that makes absolutely, it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't help the situation because it's, it fifty percent of it is enforcement. And when you speak to like, say perhaps ISD, the police department or whomever the, the appropriate personnel department, the appropriate city of department is, they bring in traffic control, then you ask who's, who's in charge of traffic control. Sometimes they say it's, is DPW or, or the police department. There is no direct answer. So we need to also, uh, Council Levy, if, if this does get tabled and, and it passes to state, uh, I believe you as a, as a sponsor and I, and Councilor Rosario, you with your other, um, ordinance, please emphasize that we, we need a, a, a centric answer or centric plan to then be able to, to branch out and actually establish these, these ordinances for, for the city.
Yeah, I, I believe so. Well, what I think is important in these cases is that sometime when we write laws and we put ordinance together, sometime we miss the, uh, the department perspective. Uh, and now if we bring them up again, they might be able to tell us this is the lack or the, uh, or the information I need to be able to enforce this easier. And now we can open up that, um, those opportunities to discuss and be able to fix what is wrong. That for years potentially they didn't bring them up. So bringing them up and, and seeing what is, what is it that they need to be able to enforce better and to define on the order and who is responsible for the enforcement, I think it will be essential.
Council President.
Councilor Rosario.
And at the beginning of this week, I actually, uh, made contact with, uh, one of the biggest school buses company, which is NRT. And I sent an email with pictures of how they parked. I know there is a state law, but it's also an inconvenience and, and, and it's unsafe to have all those big buses in some certain streets, which elderly try to cross and they can look around. You behind the bus, you can miss a kid. But I emailed them, I got a response. Then I, I prepared another email, copied the police department and I got a response from Captain Guerrero stating with the, with the ordinance number that we have. And, and he told me, how do you like me to proceed? But because the conversation just started, I said, let's see how the company actually react to it. And then we go into what it comes to enforcement. So that conversation, when it comes to the school buses, I already started it with them in, in some areas that it was hunting my district and all the pictures that I got and they sent me. I know it's, it's hurting the whole city. And hopefully we can work something together, but it's some, some things, uh, needs to be done. And again, I mean, if you want to leave it here, we can leave it here, but I know for a fact that there's two items similar to this one table somewhere in our ordinance.
All right, let's put it all together and then we can discuss this, this whole issue. Um, I know it's different perspective on different issues because the school bus have an estate law that protect them from, um, off parking on some neighborhoods and actually overnight it. I have a case that, uh, here in Lawrence that we have that situation. Uh, and they, they, they fought it and they won it.
As opposed to.
Council Levick.
Yes, another complaint is about also the foot trucks that sometime they, they park, you know, inside the, the, the garage or the, in the house. But they are complaining that somebody sometime they are a little scared because of the, of the gas stand that they live in there. And that's also another kind of situation that we are having with all of these foot trucks most of the time.
Definitely. Essentially, what we, what I'm going to, I'm going to go back to the, uh, to my original point is that when you open up, opening up a business, the first thing that, um, that the city tells you is that whether or not you're going to park a vehicle on your property. And if this vehicle is commercial for your company, you're not allowed to. You, you're supposed to find a, a locations where, um, uh, those parking are allowed by law in a commercial area. So there, there's definitely a violation of, of the law, local laws and enforcement would be essential in these points.
Council President, I have a question on that.
Councilor.
I, I, um, it, when you can, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot right now. Can you give me that ordinance later that says that it's, uh, it's prohibited from putting commercial vehicles on?
It's on the actual application.
Can you, can you, on the app, what application?
On the application to actually get us a, a business certificate.
So I, 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 so that business comes out of the clerk's office, I believe. So, um, if I can get a copy of that, that would be great because that's a question that we really haven't gotten an answer to on a lot of things. And so, Council President, you're saying that this evening, uh, might be the answer and I want to make sure, I want to see the basis on that.
Yep.
So that, and, and, and by the way, it probably needs to be based on an ordinance, not just on a piece of paper, such a guidance. So that would be helpful. So if we got anything on that, that would be very helpful. Thank you, sir.
Yep, no problem.
As opposed to.
Um, so Council Levick.
Can I make a motion to keep this item right in here and to send correspondent to, um,
So we can, uh, you can make a motion to table because I have another line motion to withdraw, but if you make a motion to table, recognize it.
Can I make a point before you make that point? It's a very quick point. Uh, if we make a motion to table this evening, and I don't really have a problem with that, if we make a motion to table, our new rule says that if we don't take action by the end of this year on things that weren't introduced this year, well.
That's on the subcommittee, those.
Pardon me?
That's on the subcommittees, not on the full council.
No, that's at the full council level. That's at the full council level. That's at the full council on the table matters, the full council. So, uh, the, the safest course of action would be to send it to the committee. Safest course of action. In case we don't get to it this year, things could happen. That's one. Number two, the other, the reason why we have that rule that we voted all voted in favor of it was the reason is because that was two councils ago. That was the council of twenty-two, twenty-three. We're now in the council of twenty-four, twenty-five. This thing doesn't pass this year. It's going to be the council of whatever, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So we talked about transparency. We talked about openness. We want to make sure things are fresh and not, and by the way, I agree with the issue. I, on the issue, I'm there. I'm probably voting yes on it when the issue comes up for a vote, because I think it's important. But I'm just looking at the process. If we open up the door here for this one, are we opening that up for something else? And that's my concern. I just want the councillor to, to think about that and maybe we send it back to the committee. Maybe that's the way we do it. I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
I just, um, just thinking through, I mean, uh, we already have the, uh, uh, ten minute discussion on this. Send it to committee, another ten minute discussion will happen. Well, we need to take, we need to take action. Let's send correspondents to that, uh, to, uh, yeah, I mean, let's send correspondents to the inspection or services. And also to the police department related regarding to this item. So we can put some type of documentation together and we can start working on something. Because I mean, uh, if, if we just send it to committee, which is going to come back again, uh, for withdraw at some point. So the motion is, I mean, it should be something else. Another motion. Motion to send correspondence, I think.
Motion to table and send correspondent.
No, one, one other time.
Okay, motion to table.
The motion.
Motion to send correspondence to the police department pertaining item two forty-eight dash twenty-three.
Second.
Oh, I understand the motion too.
I would also encourage as a friendly amendment that we put a time date on there so that they, they understand the sense of urgency. So today's what, September? We're in October. October what? It's October. What's today's date? Seventh. If we give them, I don't know. Give them two weeks, three weeks. I don't care.
Second meeting of November.
Uh.
First meeting in November, maybe?
Stick.
Second meeting.
Second.
There you go.
So I, I accept the, uh, Council of the Plans friendly amendment.
Right, this is, uh, send correspondents to the inspection services and also to the police, uh, police, uh, department related to this item. So they can come in front of us with the ordinance and the plan to enforce those.
Council President.
That's a, that's a, that's before, I just, that's, can I hear a second?
Second.
Properly second discussion, Council Levick.
Uh, can we also have at that time or whatever the time that we discuss this is that the ordinance that we already have also in place?
Yeah.
Uh, that we can, maybe we can miss everything together and have just only one item.
Yeah, uh, we, I just mentioned that we will, uh, have the ordinance and the plans to enforce. That was part of the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
I missed that part, right?
Right, Councilor Respressing Infante?
Okay.
Right.
Um, all right. Any questions on related to the correspondence? I hear none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now I understand another motion.
Motion to table.
So motion to table.
To table.
Can I hear a second? Properly second discussion. Another discussion on the table matters. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, item two eighty-six twenty-three.
Request of traffic said the intersection of Summer Street and Union Street was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
The motion to withdraw, properly second discussion. I hear none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two ninety-six twenty-three.
Hawkers and Peddlers license sent, uh, Gandhi, Frigariyo and Bra, Brailio Grillo. Sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Second.
So it's Gandhi, Revihario and Braulio Grujon. So all those, and, and any questions? I hear none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item nineteen twenty-five.
Uh, this document, uh, is handicap parking in one Linus Street was sent up to the full council to order public hearing. That's the motion.
Second.
Motion to order public hearing, properly second, uh, discussion. I hear none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two seventy-three twenty-five.
Hampshire Street drop-off area west side between Bradford and Hable Street was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation order of public hearing. That's the motion.
There's a motion on the table, properly second, uh, to order public hearing, um, discussion. There's none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two forty-five twenty-five.
Childcare parking three sixty-six Howard Street sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation order of public hearing. That's the motion.
All right, there's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. I hear none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, Councilor La Plan, do you mind taking item three forty-seven, three forty-eight, three forty-nine, three fifty, three sixty-nine, three seventy, three seventy-one as a package?
Make a motion as, as read.
The block.
Uh, Council President.
Yeah, there's no objection. What?
Council Levick.
Yes, uh, the three fifty has to be out because it's for withdraw.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Three fifty is for withdraw.
That's right.
So item three forty-seven, three forty-eight, three forty-nine, three sixty-nine and three seventy and three seventy-one as a block.
As so would.
Second.
Motion table, properly second to order public hearing on all those items, discussion. I hear none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Um, item three fifty twenty-five.
Uh, should I read those? I, I think I should probably read those items out. Three forty-seven twenty-five is handicap parking on two Fairmont Street. Three forty-eight twenty-five is handicap parking on Sixth Street. Three forty-nine twenty-five is handicap parking at sixty-two Washington Street. Three sixty-nine twenty-five is handicap parking at ninety-three Greenwood Street. Three seventy twenty-five is handicap parking to two eighty-eight High Street. And three seventy-one twenty-five is handicap parking at fourteen, forty Albion Street, number one, Albion Street, number one. Thank you.
All right, uh, motion pass. Motion carries item three fifty twenty-five.
Uh, this was sent, the handicap park in the seventh Endicott Street was sent up to the full council with a recommendation to withdraw. That's the motion.
Second.
Motion to withdraw, properly second, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes, the, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, okay, we conclude with, uh, the ordinance committee that is, uh, no public safety committee, no economic development reports, no committee of the hall reports and.
Three seventy-three.
You missing one?
I missed one?
Yes, three seventy-three.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Item three seventy-three twenty-five, uh, the chair of the ordinance committee.
My apologies, councillor, especially councillor Reyes. Uh, childcare parking at eighty Coolidge Street, interestingly, um, sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation order of public hearing. That's the motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. I hear none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, public safety committee, there is no report. Economic development committee, there is no report. Committee of the hall, there is no report. And all business, there is, uh, no item on there. Any table matters that we would like to discuss tonight. I hear none? So we're going straight to all, uh, new business. Uh, councillors, please, with me, I have no glasses on me. So. All right, item three ninety twenty-five, a se, acceptance of a, uh, of donated vehicle from NICV to the Lawrence Police Department. This is going to the budget and finance committee. Item three ninety-one twenty-five authorization to spend one million fifty-four a hundred dollars MVP grant from the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. This is going to the budget and finance committee. Item three ninety-three twenty-five, appointment of Jack, uh, uh, Jack, Jacqueline Marmol on roller border to the, uh, to the border of Radio Star. This is going to personal committee. Item three ninety-four twenty-five authorization, uh, authorization for contract. Item three ninety-four, twenty-five, authorization, uh, authorization for contract over three years. For contract seventy to twenty with the groundwork Lawrence, the corner park renovation. This is going to the, uh, or ordinance committee. Item three ninety-five, twenty-five, authorization to post advertisement and field, uh, financial offices positions. And this going, this is going to this is going to the ordinance committee. Yes. Item three ninety-six, twenty-five, auto recycle auto recycle group, L L C, John Dealer Permit of forty-eight, fifty Metford Street, and this is going to the ordinance committee. Item three ninety-seven, twenty-five, authorization to spend one hundred seventy-nine thousand, one ninety and forty-nine cents P S A P, uh, nine eleven training grant. This is going to the Boyanon Finance Committee. Item three ninety-eight, twenty-five, authorization to spend two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. Two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-six, uh, Chan Grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and, uh, and Security. This is going to the Boyanon Finance Committee. Item three ninety-nine, twenty-five, handicap parking at uh, two eighty way, two eighty-eight Lawrence Street. This is going to the ordinance committee. Item four hundred and twenty-five, handicap parking at, uh, three seventy-six, uh, Exeter Street. Apart, three seventy-six Exeter Street, no apartments. This is going to the ordinance committee. Item four oh one, twenty-five, handicap parking at twenty-five, uh, Belmont Street, no apartment. Uh, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item, uh, four oh two, twenty-five, uh, eighty-one Bunker Street, handicap parking there. Bunker, uh, Bunker Hill. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item, uh, four oh three, twenty-five, handicap parking at ninety-four Dracut Street, and that's going to the ordinance committee. Item four oh four, twenty-five, handicap parking at fifty-two Boswell Street. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item four oh five, twenty-five, resident parking, uh, six A Mum Street. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item four oh six, twenty-five, resident parking on uh, Backland Street. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item, uh, four oh seven, twenty-five, install J O pole at Mer- uh, Berkeley uh, Street and Mang- Mangomete Street. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item four oh eight, twenty-five, install J O pole at, uh, Windrop Ave, Endorsements Ave. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item four oh nine, twenty-five, install a J O pole on Malboro Street and South Union Street. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item four ten, twenty-five, install a J O pole on Bronch- on Bronford Street and, uh, Baldwin Street. That's going to the ordinance, to the ordinance committee. Item four eleven, twenty-five. Install a J O pole at Chopper Street near Glenn Street. That is going to the ordinance committee. Item two, uh, four twelve, twenty-five. Install a J O pole on Landover Street and near the intersection of Tuxbury Street. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item four twenty, twenty-five, review review on a, on a amount of real estate abatement for, uh, disabled veterans. That's going to the ordinance committee. Item, uh, four fourteen, twenty-five. Vote to confirm location of the October council meetings, uh, for the city council as per rule number two. Items, uh, councilors, this item, we need to discuss this here today. But before that, I would like to continue with item, uh, four fifteen, twenty-five. Item four fifteen and twenty, uh, twenty-five and four sixteen, twenty-five, those two items need to be declared an emergency. And I, those, those read as follows, councilors. You have in front of you on your desk, on your table. Uh, the four fifteen, twenty, twenty-five is hair ride for Halloween event at the Campania Common. October twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, from six P M to ten P M. Uh, this is the, uh, Y W C A Northeast Massachusetts. This item and it to be declared an emergency due to, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be done.
You can send it to committee.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, this item will be sent to, uh, the Boyanon, the ordinance committee, sorry. Item four sixteen, twenty-five. Same thing.
Yeah, yeah. So we just need to vote to declare an emergency so we can add it to the agenda.
Yes, uh, life, health and, uh, and wealth community cleaned up, work, uh, uh, work for the twenty twenty-five at the Arlington School to, uh, to Howard School in October twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. These two items need to be declared an emergency. So we'll be able to add it to the agenda since they were late filed. And subsequently be able to send it to the ordinance committee. Councilors, if possible, I would like to ask upon a motion to declare this item as an emergency, to be able to add it to the agenda and proceed with the course. So can I get a motion?
Remove.
There's a motion to declare item four fifteen, twenty-five and four sixteen, twenty-five.
Second.
And to declare an emergency. It's been properly second discussion for the benefit of the community. We have another item as well. If we amend the motion.
Amendment.
Yeah, uh, just to add it to the agenda and then subsequently simply send it to committee.
Councilors, there's a third item. There's a third item. It is to adopt a square honoring Lieutenant Margaret Sheehan. And the square would be at the intersection of Saratoga Street and Lawrence Streets. This was sponsored by Councilor Vivian Marmel and Councilor Wendy Luzon. This did come in timely and I apologize, that's not on the agenda because of me. The other two, um, are through citizens serve and those come in, um, late, but they do are timely. They need to be voted on prior to the, um, to have them to be done by your meeting on the twenty-first. They need to be added to the agenda tonight. So if you take all three as emergencies to add them to the agenda and all three would be being referred to committee, so none of them have to be voted on tonight.
So councilors, any question? Uh, can I get a, uh, not the motion or a friendly amendment to add?
Friendly amendment.
That, um, friendly amendment, you said that is a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Alright, this man said that is a friendly amendment. Uh, councilors, any questions?
Can you just, one more time, we've got three items. What's the new document, four seventeen?
So the newest document, four seventeen, is adopting a square honoring Lieutenant Margaret Sheehan.
There any paperwork in front of us on that item?
There is not. I, that's, yeah.
But it will be sent to committee.
It's going to committee. Um, it's honoring Lieutenant Margaret Sheehan. It'll be at the intersection of Saratoga Street and Lawrence Streets. And I can get packages out to all of you tonight or tomorrow, um, so you have it well in advance of the committee.
So everything is going to be declared emergency. I, I'm struggling to find in my rule, I, I, we're, we're getting to the same result. I don't think we need to declare it as an emergency. I think that under the, under, there's a rule that says that if it's a late file, which is what two of these apparently are. They were enough to get us onto the agenda, but they're a late file. They just need seven votes of the council to put on, on as a late file. I'm trying to find that rule real quick and I'm not able to find it as quickly as I'd like.
I know what you referring to, but I mean, I also thought that it was supposed to be re declares an emergency. Or if we can clarify, that will fine.
But for, but for that, that corner, yes, but not for the other two. The other two are on the agenda.
No, they're on the agenda as of tonight.
As of late.
As of tonight.
I put those on there for your convenience.
But it says posted on October thirty. What's today's date?
So this is a revised agenda, but those two items were not, that were not part of that agenda that was posted on that day.
Email today with this new agenda on it. There was no revised agenda.
Okay, I just, we just gotta be careful in the front page. It says, it says it's posted.
Yep, but she didn't post it, that's why. That was just sent it to us.
It's not a late file.
These three are emergency.
Emergency.
It's fascinating. We just made this edit real calm, which is fascinating. It's easier to have an emergency than it is to have a late file. Think about that for a second. Emergencies are really easy. Late files, we need seven votes. Thank you.
That's why we declared it an emergency.
That's our rules.
Alright, uh, councilors, any questions? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye to declare this three items as an, as an emergency.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please.
That with you, Councilor Reyes?
Yes.
Councilor Marmal?
Yes.
Councilor Del Rosario?
Yes.
Councilor Luzon?
Yes.
Councilor LaPlan?
No.
Councilor Levy? Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
Oh, yes. So all these items are now being declared an emergency. Can I get a motion to add it to the agenda?
Should I add to agenda?
Second.
Uh, there's a motion to add it to the agenda, properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. Now that we have it on the agenda, item four fifteen, twenty-five will be sent, will be going to the, um, the ordinance committee. And item four sixteen, twenty-five, life, health and wellness community cleanup will also be going to the, uh, ordinance committee. Item four sixteen, four seven, uh, four seventeen, twenty-five is also be, going to be going to that, um, ordinance committee. Now, let's go back to the business, councilors. And, uh, I believe that on item, uh, four fifteen, twenty-five, the reason that I put it on here is because, uh, first we need to we need to suspend the rule not to be sent it to committee. And then, uh, the second vote, as we did on the first meeting, we need to take a vote whether or not we're gonna have this meeting next, our next meeting at this location. So I can give you, I can give you a heads up if you, if any of you guys have passed by the chambers, uh, there is no, no, no desk, no furniture. At this point, they raising up the platform. So we can be about, um, anywhere between seven to ten inches uh, above the ground, so we be able to, to look at the end of the chambers. So they are, uh, they are right now doing that. Sequentially, they will, uh, they will bring the furniture, new furnitures that we're gonna have at the chambers and that gonna take a little bit of time as well. And, and we doing that in-house. That means that if something happened on any of the over fifty buildings that we have in the city, those people need to be, uh, deployed to the new location. So, uh, I'll ask the councilors to please vote in favor of item four fifteen, twenty-five so we can have the next meeting here. So can I get a motion to suspend the rules so we can, uh, not send this item to committee?
So move.
There's a motion to suspend rules. Pro, can I hear a second?
Second.
Properly second discussion.
I'm going to.
I hear no?
This is suspended.
This is, yes, this is on the road.
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it. Now we have this item here, councilors, uh, I understand a question, a motion. A motion to be able to open up for discussion. So the motion will be around moving, uh, suspending rule two so we can have the meeting on one sixty-five Bradford Street at the South Lawrence, uh, South Lawrence East uh, complex, our next general meeting.
So I, I, I don't, is that what the recommended motion is or is that what the proposal is? I'm looking for the proposal.
The proposal is to change, well, this is the, this, as per the rule number two, as we discussed previously.
Right.
We have to take a vote, majority vote, to be able to change the location of our meeting. So now we're looking for a motion to be able to have our next full council meeting at this location.
I can make a motion. I can make a motion that we have our next full city council meeting at the school department building on the same block as city hall. And that way it makes it easier for everybody, especially on a Tuesday night and for the department heads, um, and com- and committee meetings as well. That's my motion.
So we, uh, before we go into them and to accept, uh, or actually approve this motion, we need to make sure that equipments are available to be able to do what we do. Uh, here we do have it. I mean, I think it's awesome to come over to South to have a city council meeting. We haven't had these for a while.
I represent the South. My constituents will not be offended if there's not a city council meeting here. I think that people.
I also represent the South.
I, that's very good.
There's, thank you.
I don't know how to retort that. You do. We've guys, Councilor Reyes, we have a lot of people representing.
We have four people, uh, five people that represent the South.
So the long, the short of it is this. I, I, I think that we should be looking into a, it's close. If we put a sign on the building that says city council is, office is, or the chambers is closed, please go down the street half a block for the meeting, as opposed to the city council chambers are closed. Please travel the South Florence East to get in time for the meeting. I think, again, to make it easy for the, our constituents, easy for the residents on a Tuesday, it's much easier frankly for department and city employees just to go downstairs right there. It just makes more sense. I, whenever possible, here's my point. Whenever possible, we should try to make that accommodation. We're already doing this accommodation. Uh, I don't think we, have we asked anybody to see if we can do it there? Have we asked to see? They used to have school committee meetings there, so I think they might have some equipment at that location.
You, you would?
Oh, good. So what do you, through you, do you mind me asking a few questions? You're gonna stand up. Do you mind?
Go ahead.
Uh, she might need to go to the mic though, so we can all hear her.
So, the, go ahead.
Oh, not that guy, I'm making her watch. I'm sorry. We could have brought the mic to you. I'm sorry. Um, so the idea here is to, obviously for the reason I just mentioned, what would prohibit us from having a meetings? And, because I know that L R A, for example, have their meetings there. I've seen some, some videos there.
There's no video equipment anymore. There was a school committee meeting, but when the building was, when the city, the school committee moved out or the school department moved out temporarily, that whole room was disassembled. So we, we assemble this. It takes us a couple of hours to put together, because this is used as a theater classroom during the, during the school day. Uh, so for, for the LA meetings, we assemble everything that you see here. Uh, so for a, a two-vote meeting or something that they have for the school department, it's, it's a Zoom or it's there's, there's nothing physically in place down downtown at, at the moment.
Thank you. Councilor LaPlan, I think you need to trust a little bit more of that, our judgments. And, uh, is the, is the basic of, uh, having, being a little fair to the work that we've been doing. Uh, I understand that the subcommittee is, uh, potentially we can do it on Zoom. Uh, but for the main, for the main council meeting, I think that we have done, uh, a, a good amount of work to be able to have it here. And changing it without even finding out whether or not it is appropriate to have it there. I think it's, it's, it's whatever you wanna say, it is. So we have a motion to change it to the, to downtown.
Council President, um, based on the testimony that just received, I just, and I, and I, and I appreciate, um, the, the information. And, um, obviously, we're looking, the, if, if, if this motion was truly to be here, the South Florence East, it would be on this piece of paper in front of us that would have said, South Florence East. I don't think I see it on here.
I did give you a memo of it.
I have it right here.
On your desk.
And, and before we keep on discussing this, I will, I need a second. Can I hear a, can I get a second? Alright, it's been seconded by Councilor Marmal. Alright, we might continue.
It's right there. Okay. Thank you.
So, Councilor LaPlan.
I just worked off of my iPad. Okay, that's fine. Uh, I'm gonna withdraw my motion, um, with this caveat. I, I do think, um, well, I, it's, it's, how long do you think this is going? Councilor, you got that smile on your face like you have got the answer. What is, how long are we going to have this issue at the, at the, in the chambers?
I don't think it's an issue, to be honest with you.
Okay, how long do we have this fantastic opportunity to have these meetings here?
If, uh, I'll ask that question, I'll give it an answer tomorrow because that, that, that crew, as I just mentioned, we doing this in-house. That's why it take up for a while, but if we, we need to be, uh, in support of, first of all, uh, doing more in-house work, as we always said, to save money, and we doing this in-house. So I, to give you an answer, I don't know. Potentially, that's why I put this item on the agenda for the next meeting. Hopefully, by the next meeting, we don't, well, for November sixth meeting, we don't have to have, uh, a meeting up, upside of the chambers. And, uh, we, we just end with it. Next, next, next time, uh, we'll discuss this if we need another, another, another meeting to be, uh, somewhere. So.
So I, I have nothing else to add. I'm gonna withdraw my motion, Council President. Clearly, I, I, I don't have all the cards here. You do, um, as far as, um, be prepared to speak on this. I thought that one idea was. be prepared to speak on this. I thought that one idea was a good idea. Clearly, that's, doesn't, is not operable because of changes that have happened within the last year, whatever the recent time was. So, um, that's not such a great idea at this point unless, unless things can move over there quickly without a lot of cost. If that's the case, and I don't know if that's the case, um, and at this late hour on a, before the meeting, I don't know if anybody has the appetite to go down that rabbit hole. So, I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
To be honest with you, the chambers of this place is full of people compared to all the meetings that we have. It's a lot of people today out here. I love it. Yeah. I mean, but compared to what we have in other meetings. So, anyway, uh, yeah, so.
We had to beat them away.
Uh, anyway, the, the meeting, the proposed location for the, uh, for the next meeting will be one sixty-five Bradford Street at the South Lawrence East Complex. So, can I get a motion to approve the new location for the next meeting? There's a motion to approve new location. Properly second, uh, discussion. That is done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So, we need a vote for.
Um, it just says a majority, so.
I just wanna mention. Alright, councilors, they not know all the items, uh, this time. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Don't, don't we know what our next ordinance committee meetings and all?
See, Mark? We need you here.
Giovanni, I'm here for you.
See, Mark? We need you here so much. Your twenty years of experience are great. You don't forget about things. Uh, ordinance committee, uh, to be taking place online on Zoom.
Please, uh, attend through Zoom next Tuesday, seven P M.
Next Tuesday, seven P M. Um... Personal committee.
Personal committee will be Monday.
Holiday.
Oh.
No, holiday. You wanna work on a holiday?
I, I, I work regardless, so. Uh, alright, Wednesday, the eighth at six thirty. I'm, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the fifteenth at six thirty.
Wednesday, the fifteen. Uh, Bajon Finanz.
Wednesday fifte- the fifteenth at seven P M.
Seven. Alright, we are gonna have, we're gonna be having, uh, the subcommittee meetings online through Zoom. So, please be aware that if you want to join those meetings, request those, uh, Zoom links. They are gonna be available throughout. We're gonna have, we're gonna make a huge effort, uh, to send it to everybody. And, uh, they're gonna be posted with the agenda, correct? Alright, clear? With the agenda, so anybody that would like to join us, they're gonna have, um, they're gonna, they're gonna be welcome to join us on Zoom. Uh, I just wanna recognize, uh, somebody in the public very quick. Uh, Mr. Flet, the one of the security officers from the city of Lawrence and the schools. Thank you so much, Flet, for everything you do for the kids. Uh, we love you at the Gilman. I don't know if they love you here. I'm pretty sure. Thank you, guys. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn? There's a motion to adjourn. Properly second. Discussion, there is none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
We'll take them, because we gotta get them back to the building. Yeah, we'll go up the tree and maybe grab them. Uh, honestly, why don't you leave them on the table? Take any papers that you want. Maybe everything else on the table, we'll grab them. We will get them back to City Hall. That's a great question.
So, please, guys, leave the papers that you wanna draw on the front. The, the papers that you wanna draw.